Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order, and Steve, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Cass Nelly?
Present.
Councilman Nelson?
Here.
Councilman Pitts?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rossini?
Here.
Mayor Callap?
Here.
Okay, tonight I would like to continue our tradition of inviting Villa Park distinguished citizens to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Tonight we are pleased that Wayne and Mary Silzell have accepted our invitation. Wayne and Mary met at Whitman College in Walla Walla, Washington, and married in 1959. They moved to Villa Park in 1973 with their two children, then aged 10 and 12, to a new home built on the side of the former Frank and Vita Collins residence on the old Collins Citrus Ranch property. Wayne began his career in real estate finance appraisal and consulting in Seattle, later managing offices in San Jose, California, and Cleveland, Ohio, and moving to Southern California. They moved from La Cañada to Orange County when Pacific Mutual Life Insurance relocated to Newport Beach office from Los Angeles. In 1976, Wayne was appointed to the Villa Park Planning Commission, and in 1978 was appointed to the Villa Park City Council to fill a vacancy left when a council member moved out of the city. He served for 10 years as council member, Mayor Pro Tem, and mayor, having completed two elected terms following his two-year appointment. He has served as an officer member in several professional and civic organizations, including the Villa Park Rotary, Counselors of Real Estate, Lambda Alpha International, and the Forever Wild Campaign to preserve the Barnum Ranch as Santiago Oaks Regional Park. Throughout their children's years at Silver Villa and Villa Park High, Mary was active on the PFSO boards of both schools, a Girl Scout leader, a member of the Orange County Grand Jury, and an officer member of numerous community, civic, and philanthropic groups. These include the Assistance League, Children's Hospital of Orange County Guild, Performing Arts Guild, Las Campanias de San Jose, Ribbon, Red Ribbon 100, Kappa Kappa Gamma Alumni, and others, receiving the Central Orange County Alumni Pan-Hellenic Athena Award as Woman of the Year 1987. Mary has been active in the Villa Park Women's League, serving as its president in 1977-78. Mary also served as the Orange Unified School District as a public relations aide at Villa Park High School for several years. Wayne and Mary received the Outstanding Service to Youth Award from the Orange Unified School District in 1983-84. Wayne and Mary have also been active at Covenant Presbyterian Church, serving as elder or deaconess for several terms over a period of 37 years. Since closing their real estate finance corporation three years ago, Wayne W. Silzell Associates, they continue to enjoy travel, family, including four active grandchildren, friends, and a array of professional community, civic, and church activities. Now, I'd like to welcome Wayne and Mary to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can you come up front so we can take a picture of you with the council? Open everything up here.
Thank you, Bill. This is an honor for us. Thank you. Robbie S.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Vince.
Are you coming?
No.
We're sorry for whatever we said.
Okay. Vincent Sanchez, the senior district coordinator for Congresswoman Mimi Walters, is here to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. As you mentioned, my name is Vincent Sanchez. I'm with the Office of Congresswoman Walters, and I wanted to take a brief time to come down here and just to present this certificate of recognition to Mayor Bill, ex-Mayor now, past Mayor Bill Nelson, I'm sorry. Just on behalf of the office, we wanted to say, you know, thank you for your year's service as mayor and for all that you've done for the community of Villa Park all these years since you've, that you've been a resident of Villa Park, both as a resident in your private life and as a public servant for the city. So we just wanted to thank you and congratulate you, and, you know, hope that you would accept this small token of appreciation on behalf of the office.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask those in the audience to please silence your cell phones and turn them off if possible. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found at the entrance to the city council chambers, and speakers will be limited to a period, time period of five minutes. Let's see, at this time, we have a presentation from Orange County Supervisor Todd Spitzer, our District III Supervisor. And Todd, before you begin your presentation, on behalf of the city council and the entire city of Villa Park, we'd like to thank you for helping us during a disaster we had about a year ago. A year ago, we had a 200-foot section of an eight-foot storm drain collapse on us, and the city did not have the physical resources to address this. We had a, this occurred, we discovered it about nine o'clock in the morning on a Saturday, and...
It was a Saturday. Yeah, I remember that.
It was a Saturday. And the only resources we had available to us was a local contractor that had a backhoe, and that's certainly not enough to address a 200-foot length of eight-foot diameter collapsed storm drain. Anyway, we contacted Supervisor Spitzer. Oh, I might add also that we had a storm forecast in 24 hours, another major storm. So we contacted Supervisor Spitzer, who was available to us. I mean, we were actually able to contact you on your personal cellphone.
That's right.
You were able to get the county maintenance out to the disaster site with, I think, a 50-foot boom dagger of some sort, or crane of some sort. They dug it all out. They finished it up at 11:00. The storm was scheduled for noon, and right about noon, the storm arrived as planned. We would have had a real problem if not for your responsiveness and quick action, and thank you very much.
Well, Mayor, thank you very much. So, Mayor, members of the city council, and your honorable staff, everybody has my cell phones. If you want it, 714-552-0877. You might as well call me. Everybody seems to have it, and that's what I do. You know, I appreciate you recognizing me. Our county staff is terrific, and I know that was a very, very serious issue. People don't even know how big an eight-foot storm drain is. That's like massive. So I'm very, very appreciative of being here tonight, but that's a good way to lead into my conversation tonight, and I think I'm just going to gesture. You know, we, as elected officials, we are, either people really appreciate us, or they really don't appreciate us. It seems like there isn't necessarily a middle ground, and I think we all do this for the right reasons. I know you do. I try to, and that is that we really do want to serve and we want to make a difference. And so I'm just here to give a brief overview and recap of some of the major issues that are going on in the county, and I'm going to start with the homelessness issue because it's front and center. In fact, it's very, very timely, and that is, today's Tuesday, but yesterday, we started clearing the Santa Ana Riverbed. We gave notice to the residents there that we were going to be clearing the riverbed. We noticed that on January 8th, and through the cooperation of the Orange County Sheriff's Department and the Public Works Department, the same department that came to assist the city of Villa Park during the storm, we are, we are moving in that direction. And let me tell you, I was out there for three hours yesterday, and to mixed reviews, right? People recognize me. They know who I am. Some were happy to see me in terms of some of the workers, and most of the people there were not happy to see me. And the social media and the comments about what the county is doing was, has been pretty nasty, quite frankly. This poll was done by Pro-Bolsky and Associates, and it shows that homelessness now is the number-one issue in Orange County. It's on everybody's mind. It's, I don't think it's because people are realizing, I don't think it's because homelessness is suddenly a new issue. It's just that people are seeing it front and center all the time. And I've made it very, very clear, next slide, please. I've made it very clear that we cannot allow the riverbed or any particular location to become a permanent place for homelessness. I grew up near Los Angeles, worked in downtown Los Angeles, and if you go there today, at Spring Street, First Street, that whole area, Skid Row's been there, and it's been there my entire life. And I think that's because the government hasn't done much about it, and it's become, it's festered. And I just, it's not good for our county to have that entire stretch along the riverbed. It was from Fountain Valley. We closed Fountain Valley, but it's front and center there along the 57 freeway. So some of the things that people really, I want you to understand, I want the residents to understand, is that the Sheriff's Department started patrolling that area in September. It's not safe. It's a riverbed, and you probably have seen a lot of coverage. It's been one of the most covered issues of our day. We've recovered 315 tons of trash there, over 4,000 hypodermic syringes from, which people obviously use to ingest illicit drugs. We've, there, a lot of the trash is biohazardous, has to be specially handled, which is extra expensive, and we have a contract with a company who, all they do is keep that area clean, and that's costing the county of Orange another million dollars a year. So two tons of that trash, of the 315 tons, was biohazardous. The next slide, please. So as a, one supervisor for Third Supervisory District, that, the riverbed area that I just described is in the Third Supervisory District. Most of the residents at the riverbed, the vast majority are from the city of Anaheim. A large percentage are from the city of Orange, and then there's kind of a smattering. About 10% are from out of state. So we recently purchased last year the bridges at Kramer Place, which is at Kramer. It's one west of Kramer off the 91 freeway, so near the bowling alley in Fry's, near Kaiser. But one west is called Kramer Place. It's a dead end. It curves around. There's a piano store there. We bought the, an light industrial facility there, and now it's, it's our first Orange County year-round, 24-hour, full-service homeless shelter. We have 100 beds today, and we're building, we wanted to open it as soon as possible, so we're building it out while people are still living in what is like the loading dock, if you will. It's kind of a gymnasium. So we'll have another 100 beds this summer. We have 400 beds in Santa Ana at the Closed Bus Depot that we call the Courtyard, and then we open the armories early, so we have 150 beds in Fullerton. We have 150 beds in Santa Ana. One of the biggest arguments I get, and I know you all hear it, is, well, there aren't enough beds. So how, how in, isn't it inhumane to move all these people out of the riverbed when there aren't sufficient beds? We have surveyed through the Sheriff's Department and through CityNet, our contractor, every single resident, every single individual who is presently occupying the riverbed. And as a result of that survey, we found out that nine out of 10 are refusing government services even when offered. And one of the reasons, I think, and I'm just knocking on wood on this, that we haven't been sued yet, and we started this yesterday, you would think the lawsuit's coming. I hope I'm wrong. We had a lawsuit previously, is because I don't think we had good evidence, and the court was telling us, if you're going to displace people, you have to have one-for-one bed replacement. One of the things I want to alert you to, and I don't want you to get too alarmed about the Villa Park statistics, because they're small numbers, so they look bigger than they are, but one of the things we're facing is public policy that's changed in Sacramento and through the voters, through Prop 47 and 57 and AB 109. Crime is up 20% in Orange County since 2014. Crime is off the charts. Auto theft in particular, you'll see, is 40% since between 2011, 2016. Auto theft in Orange County, we are so far surpassing the rest of the nation, the state of California. Now, violent crime in the county is up 15%, and property crime overall is 20%. In Villa Park, property crime is up 19%. Your violent crime, this is a scary number, but I'm going to give you some perspective. Your violent crime is actually up 95%, but that, between 14 and 16, but that's because you have small numbers. So for example, in 2010, you had six violent crimes, 2011, two, 2012, two, but in '14, you had five, then in '15, it went down to one, and then it jumped up to four again. So you can see between 14 and 16, it went up 95%. So when you have one additional violent crime for the city of Villa Park, the percentages are just dynamic, right? Because the numbers are so small. But the message I want to leave you with, let's go back just one, I'm not done with crime, sorry. The message I want to leave you with is, overall in this county, we're continuing to have a very, very serious problem. 25% of the individuals living on the riverbed are either on probation or parole. Or if AB 109 hadn't been passed by legislature, those people, for the crimes that they commit, would be in jail or prison. So by basically declassifying almost every type of crime today, we have created a significant problem for society. Okay, Canyon Fire. So I don't need to tell you what happened, right, during the fires. It was devastating. Anaheim Hills was devastated. Of course, everything swept through the canyon from Anaheim Hills, went all the way down to North Tustin and East Orange. We lost some properties in Orange Park Acres. Shawn Nelson, the supervisor from the Fourth Supervisory District, and I are leading the investigation on the response that occurred and some potential miscommunications on the day that the fire started in East Anaheim. So we are working on that report, and we'll have the results of that report, I'm hoping, in the next 60 days, and we'll be announcing the findings of that particular report. I'll just add, today, it was a front-page story today, and the board discussed it today. I'm the representative for the board on the Orange County Fire Authority, along with Supervisor Bartlett, and we are having a conflict between the Sheriff's Department and the Orange County Fire Authority over air response. And we had a hearing about it today at the board, and it's unresolved, so at my suggestion, the board agreed that now the Office of Emergency Services, Cal OES, is going to be called in immediately to try to get their handle on the discrepancies and the dispute between the Fire Authority and the Sheriff's Department. I can tell you this, I don't care if the helicopter's red, I don't care if the helicopter's green. All our taxpayers expect if somebody's lost or they're hurt, somebody, as a first responder, is going to get there safely, and they're going to do everything they can to render aid. And so we really cannot allow, as elected officials, a dispute between these two agencies. It's not, it's not good for the agencies, it's not good for our county. So stay tuned on that. And then lastly, not, I got two more slides, if we can go one now. The County Board of Supervisors recently sued the FAA because of how planes are changing their approach because of GPS. They can fly safer now at lower altitudes, and they have, the pilots actually know exactly where they are, and so does the air traffic control. So as a result of that, pilots and the airlines were cheating, and they were spreading out their approach and departure pattern because they could do so safely. Well, of course, the city of Newport Beach, which you could expect because it takes the brunt of the departures, sued, and when I got wind of it, because I represent all the approach corridor cities from Anaheim Hills, your city, of course, Orange and Tustin, all the way to the airport, I wanted to make sure that any noise impacts we've all grown to live with didn't get worse because of the fact that the airlines were what I call cheating. So we sued, we were successful, we just have a settlement, we just negotiated and signed a settlement agreement with the FAA, and the airport will now continue to operate exactly how it's operated historically. And if they depart from that, we can get an environmental impact report, and we can also seek conjunctive relief in the federal court. So I feel like we were able to do that with a lot of drama, but the good news is, is that the airport will operate the way it has. And then lastly, I want to bring this to your attention about the Drowning Prevention Task Force. Councilman Murray from the city of Tustin, he's a mayor this year, he started this when he chaired the Fire Authority. We had a terrible, terrible drowning problem in our pools and the beaches here in Orange County. Because of our weather, we, we are outdoors all the time, and people swim year-round. But we had terrible, terrible drownings, especially among our young people and our elderly. So we engaged in a public education campaign. I asked the board to provide $250,000 matching grant, so every dollar a city contributes, the county matches, and we were able to raise significant amounts to do our public education. The good news about Villa Park, and I use "only" in quotes, your drowning statistics are very, very low. You had one drowning in the last two years, so your numbers are very low. But if you would consider participating at some point, and I know your staff can get you additional information, as well as the Fire Authority, we'd love to see you participate in our campaign. And then congratulations today, we approved a receipt of $18,000 from the Friends of the Villa Park Library to the county library system. That was on our board agenda today. So, Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm happy to answer any questions. I hate to take up any more time because I know you have a busy agenda, but I am happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Well, I'll start. Thank you very much for the update on the homeless. I had the pleasure of 48 hours in San Antonio at a place called Haven for Hope, which is a homeless encampment, mental facility, medical facility. It's kind of an all-in-one facility that was very interesting. This was a place that I feel that Orange County needs. It's a place where the homeless could go, have a place to eat, have a place to sleep, have a place to go to the dentist, go to the doctor, get their insurance benefits, and treated like human beings. They have a family housing there also. They have a place where people who are on drugs, I hate to say, can sleep on the ground, but at least they're safe. Tell me a little bit about what you feel in the future Orange County's going to do, because homelessness, although per se Villa Park does not have a homeless issue, you know, we do get vagrants that come in here occasionally because we do have a city hall, but we do have to step up, and we do need to be aware that they're outside of our city. So what are we going to do about that? I know you purchased a property, the county purchased a property on Anita, and maybe you can tell us a little bit about why the county purchased that property and what we're going to do with it, and if it's going to emulate the Haven for Hope.
Okay, so let me break this down. I appreciate the question very, very much. I think all of us appreciate the fact that even if we are not front and center dealing with a problem in our particular city, we have a responsibility to deal with this issue. It's, it's the humanitarian thing to do, it's the right thing to do. I mean, it pulls on my heartstrings all the time, but I have a couple axioms that I feel philosophically in why I ran for office. I don't believe that government solves problems well historically and consistently. And number two, individuals have to take self-responsibility to solve their problems. We can't force people to do anything. I mean, I can lock somebody up, I can't, police, under 50, 150 of the health and welfare code, but that's only if there are certain findings and they're a danger to themselves or to others. But for the most part, most mentally ill are not. Let's talk about Anita Street. So I, we did Kramer, so those beds are for homeless, and the idea is to transition them to permanent housing, right? I mean, we can house the homeless all day long, but they've got to figure out what their demons are and what's blocking them or inhibiting them from getting to permanent housing. That's, that's what Haven Hope is in San Antonio. I'll get to that in a minute. So the Board of Supervisors, we're in Escrow, the county currently, on a very large building on Anita Street, which is near the riverbed, so it's near Angel Stadium, and it's going to be our psychiatric mental health bed facility. Today, if you have a mental health crisis, some kind of episode, a family member, you go to the emergency room. The emergency rooms are not the place to deal with psychiatric episodes. So the hospitals have gotten overwhelmed, they'll take the person, but that's not, that's not why you go to a hospital generally. It's for a physical condition, not mental. So we're going to deal with that outside of the hospitals. It will probably be run by hospitals, mental health and psychiatric, of course. So that's on Anita Street. I can't tell you how many beds that's going to have. In terms of San Antonio, I went to San Antonio with a group of individuals more than a year ago, and I absolutely subscribe to the vision that we need one location. Does that mean my time is up, or is it just?
No.
Yeah. Oh, that's, whatever, it doesn't matter, I'm just teasing. And so we need a place, it, what the councilwoman is describing is, you need a place from A to Z that you can deal with people. So you, so for example, I was a police officer. When I worked LAPD, I could go to the Weingart Center in downtown LA. If somebody was drunk in public, I didn't have to arrest them, I didn't have to do the paperwork, I didn't have to take myself off the street for three hours. I could drop them off at the Weingart Center, they could dry out, get a shower, get food, and then generally, that's all it was. It was a drunk tank. The idea of San Antonio is, you go there into, into the drunk tank, if you will, either under the influence of drugs or alcohol, and then when you sober up, there's social workers and professionals there that try to get you to walk across the hall to the detox. And then you, if you're so willing, and most aren't, it takes, on average, 60 interactions of that, of being under the influence, before you get enough attention that you say, I'm actually going to kill myself and my life is ruined, right? Where you want to go into detox. And then you spend six miserable days going through withdrawals, dealing with what it means to get those poisons out of your body. If you can get through all that, then you continue through the continuum on this campus, and you can get through family reunification, jobs, papers, whatever you need to triage yourself back to what most of us think is... and you can get through family reunification, jobs, papers, whatever you need, to triage yourself back to what most of us think is a normal life. And then it's family reunification, and, and, and housing, and then hopefully, a job, permanent housing, self-sust, self-sustenance. So, I'll, I'll let you in on a little secret. When I came back from San Antonio, I was just as impressed as you, and I honestly believe we need a place like that for Orange County. So there's actually a location that fits this bill perfectly, which is on Batavia, near the police station in Orange. And it's closed, it was built by the Community College District, and they didn't get permission of the state architect. And so they've never been able to use the facility, Rancho built it for an adult education center. So because they didn't get the permission of the state architect, and there's some under, there's some groundwater contamination issues, it's, they've never been able to use the building. So I've been trying to negotiate letting us do the testing, so we can decide how polluted it might be. And assuming we can get through the remediation, that should be our campus for the north part of the county. It's big, it's a beautiful facility, and it has the ability with parking to build additional buildings on top of it. So, I need, you know, the more we discuss this, it's going to take all of our collective efforts, going to San Antonio, being impressed, seeing it, talking about it, it's going to take all of us to be rowing in the same direction, getting all of our respective colleagues who are elected, whether city councils, or community college, or school board, or whatever, to say, "This is what we need to do for Orange County." And then my last point's the following, I've been making this point a lot lately. And that is, with the value of land in Orange County, it's prohibitively expensive to build affordable housing in our county, very difficult. So I really do think we're way past LA, San Bernardino Riverside, Ventura, San Diego, all coming together and discussing where by pooling our resources. We could build affordable housing for the region, and stop dealing with this problem in a very myopic way, which tends to be geographically isolated. We should all just sit down and figure out how we can pool our resources, and solve the problem for a great number of people, where land isn't so expensive, maybe, maybe it's feeling, maybe it's a high desert, I don't know. But I know it's impossible to build affordable housing, it's very difficult, not impossible, here in Orange County. So, I hope that answers the question, we have got to coalesce over that vision of building a San Antonio here in Orange County.
And it, and it does, I want to turn it just, the issue kind of back to Villa Park, because, being part of, we have sheriff contract, and it goes up every year. I mean, that's, you know, that is our largest expense that we have. And to have a sober tank, I'm going to, you know, tell you, we've got a facility where the officers are not repeatedly spending four hours to take the, you know, gentleman who's urinated on the, on the sidewalk, they take them in 200 times a year, because almost every single night. And we need to stop that, because we can't continue to have a 6% increase every single year in the city of Villa Park. So hopefully, if it's not this facility, possibly, there is another way to look at that, to get that kind of a service for the Sheriff's Department to be able to take the drunks, to take that person over there, so that we don't keep them tied up for four hours.
So can I answer that quickly?
Yes.
So, the Anita Street facility, we are having preliminary conversations about whether Anita Street might have that type of space at that building. But, I want you to appreciate a couple things, when we did Kramer, we, I hosted a summit or a town hall at the very large church that's over in Anaheim Industrial Complex, and 1,000 people came, and they were very, very unhappy because we were going to put a homeless shelter in the Anaheim Industrial Complex. I, I'm already getting objections from businesses who already are on Anita Street about what that's going to look like, and the Orange City Council is very concerned as well, and they should be. But I will submit to you, if you go to Kramer today, you will not know it's a homeless facility, you can't tell. We haven't had, again, knock on wood, we haven't had-
We've been to Kramer, so we've got, and you're right, you don't, you don't know it's-
You don't know it's even there. We haven't had-
It looks like an industrial building.
Right, we haven't had one call for service, you can't walk up, you can't be discharged. So, what I'm trying to do, is I'm trying to, and I'm working on now, developing an operating plan for Anita Street, so that if we do have those kinds of facilities, that if you're, say you're La Palma PD, you can't just drop off that individual, and then not be responsible for how they get back to where they came from. So we might have an Uber contract, a taxi contract, La Palma may have to send somebody and pick, I, we don't, we haven't worked all that out. But I hope you appreciate that the city of Orange would not want all loitering around that, and they don't want those people discharged to the street. So, I think there's promise, and I'm hopeful, because I think it's the right thing to do, but I've got to make sure I can operate Anita the same way we're operating Kramer, which is basically out of sight, out of mind.
Thank you, Supervisor, I have one last question before you conclude. You presented some crime statistics, which seem to differ from what the Orange County Sheriff has published, you know, particularly related to crime rates in Orange County, or excuse me-
Are you talking about countywide or Villa Park?
Pardon?
The crime, crime countywide or Villa Park?
Villa Park.
Okay.
Could you or our lieutenant provide some insight as to what the differences are, and why we might be seeing different numbers?
I may not agree with Supervisor Spitzer's assessment of the numbers he presented, probably crime is up. Fortunately, I don't believe the Supervisor's office has these numbers yet, but for 2017, we are showing a trend down rate. I would say the Supervisor's numbers for 2016 and '14 would be correct. 2017, we're still looking at around a 15% decrease, but the number you saw reported is up.
Okay, yeah, that, it seems that the, what we've been seeing and published on the register is that crime overall has been decreasing in Or, in Villa Park, correct?
We've been very successful.
Yeah, okay, okay, well, thank you for, oh, yes, yes.
I realize we're talking about things that could come in the future, things that you currently have in place today, but as you displace people in the riverbed, is there any assessment as to where they're going at this point in time? For those that don't want to go to a facility, don't want to check in, what's available to them to move to, or to go to, or where are they going? Have we assessed that?
So obviously, we're going to, we're observing that and watching that, and all the local PDs for the cities are obviously very concerned, all the elected officials are concerned. We have had CityNet at the riverbed, the mobile home, you can see it, right? That's been out there since July. We've been offering people services, and trying to do everything we can to connect people to services. Since we posted the notice, since we started this yesterday, we've, six people from the riverbed went to the courtyard. We've moved since July, 175 people from the riverbed to some kind of housing, whether motel voucher or other kind of housing. And then we have another 170 in the pipeline who are being triaged for services. There's, 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 I don't want to call it an ugly fact, bad word, don't want to regret using it, but there's, there are just a group of people, hard for us to understand, right? There are just some people that want to live on the street.
Right.
And they don't want to go into a structured institution, like a Kramer, or the courtyard, because they're just used to a particular lifestyle. And I cannot fathom that for the life of me. Because I'll submit to you, if I was out on the street for any period of time, I, I'd probably start talking to myself too. I mean, I just don't know how you stay sane and live in a situation like that. But be that as it may, again, the law doesn't allow me, nor do I think it should, it doesn't allow me to lock up somebody because they choose not to go somewhere. But, all the cities do have anti-camping ordinances, and so there's an ability to enforce it. And I'm, I hope I'm faced, and I say that in quotes, I'm hope I'm faced with this problem, where I actually know how many people don't have services. See, if I can get a list of all the people that come off the riverbed who actually want services, then I can make the compelling argument about why we need to build the San Antonio model, or why we need to hurry up and, and, and build out Anita Street. But because the numbers have been so nebulous, because we've allowed 500 people to live on the riverbed, I can't get that number, because if you don't tell them to leave, they'll stay there for years. Today, a gentleman came and testified at the Board of Supervisors at our board meeting, he's living on the riverbed for three years. No job, no income. Well, just walked down most of those people's housing. They've got pool fences, like, right, the ones that go into the concrete, brand new pool fences, I didn't think they bought that off Amazon. And then, they've got 50 bikes on the other side of that fence. We all know, that's why I was talking about the property crimes.
They're homestead.
Property crimes are going up like crazy, because they're stealing. They've got to get their stuff from somewhere. Car batteries are being used to drive, you know, inverters, 110 power. Stuff is just getting, you know, and you saw on the riverbed, when we cleared Fountain Valley, we found 1,000 bikes in, in, in the riverbed. So, and there was caverns dug out. So again, at the end of the day, I need to get people pushed into institutions and help and services, and the rest of the folks who just want to do whatever they're going to do, we'll have to deal with that as we go. I can't solve all those problems.
I understand.
Yeah.
Well, I hope you succeed in removing them on the timeline that the county has set it. I know in about 10 days, you might have a hard date, but it has taken an impact to even Villa Park, because what's happened is, during the day, these people come into the city, they do come into the city of Orange, where all of us do go and we shop, and we're stopping soliciting these businesses, we're not shopping there anymore. So, we're relying on the county keeping their word to clean the place up, it'd be nice to drive down Chavon Avenue and not be afraid. So I hope you succeed, we expect you to succeed, and yeah, let them go someplace else. It's cold in San Antonio, but they, they need to move if they don't want services from them. And I certainly hope, we're relying upon you to remove them, and allow people to ride their bikes on the riverbed again.
Well, I appreciate the comments, I appreciate Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate your time, I appreciate your assistance in this. At the end of the day, this is an absolute partnership, we will never solve this if every layer of government is not working together, and the faith-based communities are not brought together, the for-profit businesses, who have a big responsibility in this too, and so do nonprofits. So thank you very much, and I really appreciate your time, thank you for allowing me to serve your city.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll, we'll now move on to a presentation by the Sheriff's Department.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm pleased to present our crime report for December of 2017, which I can assure you will be very short, because fortunately, we only had three property, or part one crimes for the month of December. So with that, we had two residential burglaries, one where a suspect entered through an unlocked side garage door, and this is on the 18,000 block of Pamela. The loss was a laptop, purses, and jewelry. We had another residential burglary on the 18,000 block of Valley, where jewelry and coins were taken from a residence. The victim believes that this could have been done by some of the construction workers who've been working on the home for the past few months. We had one petty theft on the 17,000 block of Beckley, where items were taken from an unlocked vehicle parked on a driveway. And per the usual, if we had just locked our doors and our cars, crime would have been cut almost to zero for this particular month. Our traffic enforcement still remains to be a concern, we've put our deputies through some additional training to step up enforcement in this area, of course, with the overall goal of the reduction of accidents for the city. We were at a total of six traffic accidents for the month of December, we would like to see that number to be slightly lower. I am happy to say, however, that none of those accidents resulted in any injuries, and two of them were cars that hit parked objects. And that concludes my crime report, are there any questions?
I just have a comment, I want to make sure that our residents know, when these crimes, most of them, most of them occur, they're occurring with unlocked cars, homes that don't have an alarm, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just want to make sure that I'm saying it right. And even with a locked car, but they leave everything in the open, such as their tools, which is how some people make a living. You've got to remove the items from your cars, because when people walk by and you look in and you see a purse, it's very tempting. And lock your doors, if you don't have an alarm, please put an alarm in, because they just go to the next house. They go to the first house that doesn't have an alarm, they see the little light, they know, they're pretty smart, these guys. So, that's where our, most of our crime is coming from, easy opportunity.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And I learned something new this week too, and have actually implemented it, but suggests that we all go out and look at our electrical boxes, and make sure that you put a lock on the electrical box, so that the thief cannot open up the electrical box and turn your power off, so they can come in and disable your alarms and other things in your house. So it's a good little tip to think about.
That's a good idea.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is the Orange County Fire Authority here?
He, I was contacted by Andy Kovacs, he is detained at a meeting, a community hall meeting in Tustin. He was sending a rep, we may come back to this in a minute. He's sending someone out here, he just emailed me or texted me a few minutes ago and said he apologized, but he couldn't be here right at 6:30, so if we want to wait, we can come back to him when we finish the presentation.
Okay, if he's able to make it, okay. Villa Park Library, is there a representative here? All right.
Hi, everyone, good evening, I'm Samantha Smith, Branch Manager of the Villa Park Library, thank you for having me. So December was an exciting month at the library, and I'm happy to share the following updates. We had our first library card campaign, this first campaign was with Villa Park Elementary School, and we look forward to working with additional schools in the near future. As I reported at the last city council meeting, each student was given an application in their classroom, and told to return to the library to get a card. The classroom with the most returned applications would get a pizza party in the classroom, and we received nearly 150 applications. The winning classroom is a third grade classroom, and the pizza party will be tomorrow. We thank the Friends of the Villa Park Library for generously supporting this library event, they're supplying pizza, cookies, drinks, and paper goods. We also thank the students, parents, and families from Villa Park Elementary for coming in to the library over their winter break. I also thank and acknowledge the Villa Park Elementary School teachers and the principal, Mrs. Little. They were very enthusiastic and extremely supportive, and helped make the program a success. Their support and enthusiasm, and all the families, helped applications go up by 237%. So we have 200, we're up 230%, 237% for library cards. And we credit this spike definitely to the library card campaign. So I'm excited to use this program as a model, and hopefully work with other surrounding schools in the coming months. In January, we concluded our winter reading program, this was an easy program for children, teens, and adults. Participation was easy, they signed up at the library, and they were told to read three books over the winter break. And we had 136 people participate in this reading program. I think that's a great number. The Friends of the Villa Park Library supplied stuffed animals and toys for the kids, and book bags for the teens and adults. We did three opportunity drawings for the grand prize winners, and we were, winners were selected in each category, children, teen, and adult. This month, our children's librarian, Janine, started a new storytime, it's called Music and Movement Storytime. This storytime held on Thursday mornings at 11:00, centers around music and rhythm, and is designed for younger children, babies, toddlers, and their caregivers. This is a brand-new program, and we are very proud to now offer two storytimes per week. Last week, we hosted a program called Reading with a Deputy, and deputies from Orange County Sheriff's Department came to the library to read books at our storytime. The deputies came out, and they were really wonderful, and we really appreciate that they took the time out of their day to come and join us. Everyone loved it, we had about 40 people in attendance, and they read stories, they answered, give a presentation about what a deputy does, answered questions, and posed for, you know, photo opportunities with the kids. It was a really big success and a great opportunity, so we hope to have them back maybe in the summer. In other programming news, the longtime library book club, Book Chat, has moved to 10:00 AM versus the previous 9:00 AM. If anyone's interested in joining the book club, we meet the third Wednesday of every month at 10:00 AM. This library had a number of very well-received programs in the past month, and we really credit that to additional marketing and publicity of these programs. We thank the city of Villa Park for helping us to promote the programs on their website, and by sending out email reminders. We also thank the Friends of the Villa Park Library, as well as the entire community as a whole, for really helping promote and advertise our programs. If you ever have a program you'd like to share, please share it with me, visit the Villa Park Library and share it with me. We're really anxious to see what people want to see in their library. A programming reminder, lighthearted mystery author, Sue Ann Jafarian, will be here this coming Saturday, January 27th at 2:00 PM, it's a free program and no registration is required. So if you'd like to meet a published author, please join us this Saturday. An update on the library redesign, as Supervisor Spitzer mentioned, that we're so excited that the 18- so excited that the eighteen-thousand dollars provided by the Friends of the Villa Park Library has been accepted by the County of Orange, and we're working to process that and get new furniture ordered, the building will be painted, and do a little bit of a refresh on the library. Um, if anybody wants to visit during our open hours, they can visit the library, they can see that already one entire wall has been painted, patched, and repaired, and it's really starting to look good. We had a furniture vendor come today and give price quotes, and we're expecting to be able to purchase probably during the month of February with a potential install date of April or May. I wanna express my genuine gratitude to the Friends of the Villa Park Library and as well as the City of Villa Park. I've been in my new post as Branch Manager here for about four months, and because of all your support, we've already accomplished a lot. And this is a great city to work in and a great library to be part of, so I look forward to our continued partnership and success in 2018. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to especially thank you for coming to our council meetings every month and giving us, uh, the updates, they're very informative. Um, the, uh, the library has always been an important part of our community, and we've worked, uh, hard as a community to keep the library here, and, uh, as demonstrated by the, uh, the Friends of the Villa Park Library, we're willing to step up and, uh, support our, uh, our library financially as well. Anyway, thank you again for coming to make the presentations, and I look forward to your presentation next month.
Wonderful, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
I do have a question, you had a program, Read with the Cops, how did that go?
It was really, really well. We had about forty people, and it was just a huge success, people really enjoyed it. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, now's the time for, uh, council member meeting attendance reports. Uh, first is the Orange County Mosquito and Vectra Control District.
That would be me. Uh, first of all, I wanna let you know that Orange County had thirty-eight, uh, human case of West Nile virus last year, including four deaths. The City of Anaheim had the most human case of West Nile virus with six, including two of the deaths. The other two deaths were in Fullerton and Costa Mesa. This is up from thirty-six cases of West Nile human cases, uh, last year, and with one death, so it's up quite a bit. In the January board meeting, we had the election of the two thousand and eighteen Executive Board. Lucille Crane from Anaheim was elected president, Cheryl Brothers from Fountain Valley was elected vice president, and Sherry Horn from Laguna Woods was elected secretary. We also reviewed the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen audit results, had a clean audit with no issues, and we approved a position of senior accountant to replace the county's supervisor position that retired in December. That concludes my report.
Thank you, uh, councilman. The next, uh, presentation or report is on the Orange County Sanitation District, and that's me. Um, I attended a special meeting of the Board of Directors of the Orange County Sanitation District on December twentieth, and the purpose of this special meeting was to tour the treatment facilities and to review planned maintenance and improvement projects that the sanitation district is implementing to ensure efficient and reliable operations. This meeting was followed by a regular meeting of the sanitation district board, and at that meeting, in addition to discussing, uh, ongoing maintenance and improvement projects, the board authorized staff to prepare and mail Proposition Two-Eighteen notifications to affected property owners outlining a five-year regional sewer service fee scheduled with annual increases of approximately one-point-two percent, beginning with fiscal year twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. Uh, next is Orange County Fire Authority. Do you have a meeting, though? Orange County Fire?
That was you.
Technically.
Okay.
Uh, I have not attended a meeting, nor have, uh, I've been invited to a meeting as of yet, uh, we will be having, uh, I should say, I'll have my first meeting in two days. I've contacted the board clerk, um, got the necessary paperwork filled out, and, um, eagerly, uh, looking to represent, uh, City Villa Park on the board, and, uh, hopefully, get some resolution of some of the issues that our, our county's facing, uh. It's unfortunate that, um, the Sheriff's Department and the, uh, Orange County Fire Authority are in this dispute, and I think they need to resolve it immediately.
Okay, thank you. Orange County Library Advisory Board.
There's no meeting.
No meeting? Uh, Budget and Finance?
No meeting.
Community Development and Public Safety, um, meeting, um, no, there was, uh, no meeting this month. Human Resources?
No meeting.
City Schools Advisory?
No meeting, it's one scheduled for February.
Law Enforcement Advisory Committee?
No meeting.
Investment Advisory Committee?
We did have a meeting, we are scheduled to meet quarterly. We were scheduled to meet on January the seventeenth, but we thought since Frank was so new, we didn't wanna put him to that just right away, so we delayed the meeting in February the thirteenth to give him a little time. But instead, we had a PAR subcommittee meeting. Uh, we met with Dennis Yu, Executive Vice President of PARS, and Keith Stripling, Vice President and Senior Portfolio Manager, Highmark Capital Management. The purpose of this PAR subcommittee meeting was to discuss and preliminary select and asset allocation investment strategy, fund and dispersion strategy, and a quarterly annual review reporting process. The recommendation from this subcommittee will be presented and discuss the full Villa Park Investment Advisory Committee meeting on February the thirteenth, our normal quarterly meeting.
Thank you. Villa Park Community Services Foundation?
Well, uh, we had a meeting scheduled but did not have it because it wasn't posted in the, in ample time to, uh, according to the rules, so we just, uh, everybody kinda met and left. We really didn't have a full-blad, fledged meeting, but, uh, we've had some subsequent discussions in committee with regards to the, uh, uh, community building that we're look, taking a look at, and, uh, there's a meeting tomorrow night, so hopefully that one has been noticed in enough time so that we can all be productive in the meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you. Um, Friends of the Villa Park Library?
Um, I was, uh, unable to attend the last meeting, so, and I think she did an eloquent job of giving us an update on what's going on in, in the Villa Park Library.
Sounds like all good stuff, too. Okay, uh, one, last one is the Infrastructure Management Advisory Committee. Uh, we held our kickoff meeting last Thursday, and Lee Cabrera was elected chairman. Uh, election of a vice chairman was deferred to the February eighth meeting. At the meeting, staff presented a review of streets, storm drain, and sewer maintenance projects, and distributed related reports for discussion at our subsequent meetings.
Was that meeting held, um, during the evening or during the day?
Uh, it was held at, uh, seven-thirty in the morning on Thursday.
At seven-thirty, and the staff, the staff was here, too?
Yeah. Okay, uh, public comments, at this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provide that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Opportunities will also be provided for public comment on each agenda item. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and thirty minutes for all comments. Are there any speakers?
We have one speaker form from, uh, Mr. Wayne Suzel.
Good evening, council, I'm Wayne Suzel, one-eighty-two-oh-two Montana Circle here in Villa Park, for forty-five years. Uh, I appreciate very much the honor, uh, that Mary and I received to have the opportunity to do the pledge of allegiance, and I think it's a great program. However, tonight was an embarrassing one. Uh, Mary and I have tried to serve the community, as we have always believed that service in a community is much, uh, it's a, you re- the reward is much greater than the work you put forth. Uh, you learn to love your community for reasons that, uh, are your own, uh, because you get back what you put into it. Uh, tonight, with the two of you that did not, uh, obviously were objecting to, uh, I believe, the other three members of council, I don't know that we've offended you personally, therefore, I'm sorry if there's something. Diana, I've signed your nomination papers, you live a block away from me, we talk whenever we meet, and I know you're not hypocritical, so I would gather that we, uh, this was a political fight between the other three and the two of you. Uh, that faction has to stop, folks. I'm serious, it really does. You're embarrassing the city. It's the note on every newspaper article about the City of Villa Park is this faction business. I served, out of ten years on this city council, I served, uh, nine of them without that. It seemed to creep in when you have strong leaders, alpha types, and what you do have to do is work those problems out in the back room, and then form a consensus and say, "All right, I'll go along with you publicly." But to give it, uh, this, to make this the counterpoint of so many articles is affecting Villa Park's reputation, and you really do have to stop it, for the public's sake and for the city's sake. And we don't need it anymore, okay? So somehow, get together and decide how you're going to work, because you were, you know, elected as a team to run this city in the best interests of the citizens, not to show public strength of your own objectives. So if you can't work as a team, then for God's sakes, resign. So, Mary and I are, I wish we hadn't been so honored tonight because it was embarrassing to us, and I hope the citizens of Villa Park realize that we don't have anything against any of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
I have two other speaker forms, Nicole Jones.
Dear Mayor and Council, my name is Nicole Jones residing at one-zero-two-nine-two Via Corta. Last month, on December fifteenth, my high school son called me while I was at my other son's holiday party at Villa Park Elementary School, and told me that someone was trying to break into our house. I told him immediately to hang up and dial nine-one-one. He did this and made the nine-one-one call at one-twelve PM. At that time, I ran from my other son's classroom out to my car that was parked quite a ways down in the residential streets surrounding Villa Park Elementary. Then I drove home. When I got to my street, I saw a pool service truck in front of our house. I spoke several minutes to the pool service workers who were in the truck and found out that they had let themselves into my backyard to look at a problem with my pool pump that I was previously unaware of. They stated that they had not tried to enter my house. However, I am not convinced that they did not try to do so, since my son saw someone outside our door who tried the handle to the door, and that door is over fifteen yards away from our pool pump and not on a path towards the pool pump. I had this entire conversation, then walked into my house and spoke with my son. Since the sheriff had still not arrived, I attempted to call the Sheriff's Department at one-twenty-one PM to tell them not to bother coming. After being routed through their automated system, I hung up and was looking up the local number when I saw the sheriff's cruiser coming down our street. They pulled up at one-twenty-three PM, eleven minutes after the initial nine-one-one call. This should have been a high-priority nine-one-one call from a minor during an active burglary. I walked out and spoke with the officer and told him everything was now fine. Before he left, he told me that it was okay, since he had just been up at the center. Quite frankly, I could've walked from the center to my house in eleven minutes. I would like this council to look into this matter and task the Sheriff's Department with improving response times in this city. There is no reason why an active burglary call from a minor should take that long, when by his own admission, this officer was not on another call, and no reason why a resident should be able to leave a party, run over three-hundred yards, drive to the scene, and completely handle a situation before law enforcement personnel even arrive. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Amanda Richard?
Hello, good evening, my name's Amanda Richard, and I live at one-seven-seven-six-two Mountain View Circle in Featherhill, the little hidden drive. Um, I'm actually wanting to find out more information in regards to the emails that I had sent out, um, to the gentleman, I believe there's five different, uh, emails I'd sent out, one being to our mayor, uh, in regards to implementing a three-way stop sign at Serrano in Featherhill. Um, I'm not sure if any of you guys drive on Serrano daily or during the school hours or even on the weekends, but Serrano is a very dangerous street for our children. I'm a mother of two children personally, and I walk my son to school every day. It is completely unacceptable. Um, I even see adults, grown parents, it's not high school students racing to get to school, it's, it's adults just driving, trying to make their kids to school. Um, I really truly believe this three-way stop is going to help eliminate any accidents in the future and possibly even save a life. There's been a time where I've had to get out of my car and help children cross the street because they are too afraid, 'cause cars are not stopping at pedestrian crosswalks. They keep going, I've seen a mother and holding a baby with two children trying to cross the street, cars are just not stopping at that crosswalk. It is dangerous, and it is unacceptable that that area is not patrolled or has, doesn't have any type of flashing lights or a stop sign. I also believe having the three-way stop sign will also help with the flow of traffic. You have a lot of cars driving on Serrano that are pulling into Featherhill and doing U-turns, uh, it's a great street for cars to just pick up speed, 'cause it's a straight shot to that stoplight. Now, I believe that if you put a stop sign right there in the halfway mark, that's gonna stop the cars, make them stop, A, for people to cross the street, but also have them have a check that they need to slow down and then go back to the, the light. So I really do believe that that's gonna help with speeding on that street, as well as the safety of the children and the families that are on that street daily. I also believe it'll help with, um, pulling out of Featherhill, you can't see, 'cause a lot of the cars are just parked along Serrano, and you can't, you can't make, you can't look, there's too many cars blocking, you know, trying to get past the cars that are trying to pull into Serrano. I just believe this is a safety issue that does need to be looked at, and I know that the city manager or the city engineer contacted me saying that he was gonna open up, um, a file to have this, you know, looked at, but I'm wondering what it is, what, you know, surveying is actually gonna be done, like what is the process? What are the measure, I mean, he just said that traffic, I mean, how do you measure the safety or whether or not a stop sign can be put there? Does anybody know?
Yeah, I, I would be happy to answer that. Uh, Akram, um, in, in response to your email, which he's indicated, we've initiated what they call a traffic study, which is to get a traffic, come in and counts, we'll also count the pedestrians and look at that. Uh, we have also had contacts regarding the potential of speed bumps along Serrano, which would be another alternative, so in lieu of, of one, we're trying to figure out what would be the appropriate response. So, we're in the process of evaluating that with the raw numbers, which we have to comply with, uh, to bring forward, the, the council has in the past indicated. So, we have initiated that, uh, and so, that's already started, I believe Akram started it the day that he, you, we got your email, or the next day, which.
Yeah, it's been, it was great, I really do appreciate the quick response.
So we will get that, and it's just, they do a sampling on various days.
Okay, so it's not just one day?
No, it's not one day.
I just wanna make sure it's multiple.
We, we wanna have flow versus a single isolated incident. We may walk out there and it may be just dead quiet that day.
Correct.
And misrepresent the situation, so there's different periodic times during the day, a traffic study will come back and have a representative sampling of that and allow us to also do that, and then compare, we also wanna talk to the sheriff about speed bumps, because that may be a different option in, in order to address it. So we have a number of sort of ideas going on here, uh, we recognize that it is an issue, and we have started that. Uh, I would say that the next, uh, the next, uh, Law Enforcement Advisory Committee, which is on February twelfth, I believe, uh, will be doing some reports to that at that point, and we'll have some numbers hopefully to be able to present there, and then come forward to the council with our recommendations.
Amazing, thank you, and also, I had spoken with you at the Halloween thing, I told you I watched, uh, the last meeting on TV, and you invited me to come down here and check out a meeting, and I really appreciate it, and thank you all very much, and for looking into this, thank you.
Mrs. Richards, before you, uh, step down, um, you meant, there's one thing you mentioned that concerns me a bit, you said, uh, parking is obstructing the crosswalk, is, uh, I know that some of the curbs are painted red, are there cars parking in?
Several, I, I can tell you one particular that parks there, it's a black SUV, uh, Suburban that parks there every day on the black, or the red curb, uh, especially during pickup times, and, um, she leaves her car and goes into school, um, and this is during pickup where her car is blocking the flow of traffic, and so people are having to go around her car, I mean, it's insane, it's, it's so bad. Uh, I definitely think that area needs to be looked at fully.
I, I would offer, too, that, I think you heard Lieutenant Puckett said that they are, we have new deputies on thing, and he's giving additional training. We've had this discussion about traffic enforcement, and, uh, he and I, um, sort of had a discussion about what needs to be done, so I think that you're gonna see some more proactive, uh, policing, I guess is the best way to say it, uh, throughout the city with regards to traffic enforcement.
Yeah, I hope so, it's just, again, there's just so many children, and it's just waiting to happen, something, I mean, I know I'm a paranoid mom, but it, it's, it's scary, you know, just.
I don't think, I don't think you're paranoid, because I see it every day over at Villa Park Elementary, too, as well, so, with, you know, with people parking in the red zones and illegally parking, taking pictures of them and so forth, so.
Yeah, I appreciate you listening to my concern, thank you guys for. Thank you guys very much.
I think you're going to see significant stepped-up enforcement in the very near future. It's already begun, but it's nowhere near where it needs to be. Candidly, it's an issue that I spoke to the lieutenant directly three or four months ago. The statistics were candidly embarrassing. Two traffic citations, two moving violations in a month, maybe a few others. I think any novice, let alone a law enforcement officer, can go down to any street corner and pick out two moving violations in about 15 minutes. So we hear you, and I think all of us are on it, and the lieutenant will be taking care of business. And not to say he hasn't, but I think that the extra training is going to pay big dividends. So thank you.
Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
And then we have Donna Buxton.
Good evening, Mayor Colacott, council members. I wasn't planning to speak tonight until I saw the antics earlier on the part of council members Pitts and Fasenelli. I was very disappointed that you couldn't get up and recognize the service of council member Nelson, whether you agree with his methods and the things that he's done in service of our city. The fact is that he has been a great service to this city and deserves to be acknowledged. But it's despicable that you, what you did to the Sillsells. They are just fine, upstanding citizens of this city who have served us for years, and I'm further embarrassed that he had to get up and, and talk to you the way he had to, and that, that a wonderful honor became a huge embarrassment for him because of what you did. It's disgraceful, and it's all in the name of politics. And, you know, you did that to one of your own residents. It's really shameful. Thank you.
Any other speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, the next item is public hearings.
If I would, could, we do have our.
Oh, yes, the fire authorities.
Authority, and I, I would, again, Andy Kovacs extends his apologies for lateness, but better late than never.
Yeah, appreciate you coming. And city manager, thank you for reminding me.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Mayor Protemin, City Council. My name's Colton Ashby. I'm the battalion chief for the city of Villa Park. This reporting period since the beginning of the year till tonight, we've had 30 calls for service within the city of Villa Park. No significant incidents to speak of during that timeframe. And if I could real quick, I think today is a good reminder with the, with the earthquake in Alaska today to serve, to remind the citizens of Villa Park that the best thing to do right now, and it's a, like I said, a good reminder is to have a emergency preparedness plan, whether it be the recent wildfires that we've all experienced, the flooding, the earthquakes, you know, California is a hotbed of activity year-round. So have an emergency preparedness plan. Make sure you know how to use a fire extinguisher. Make sure that you have a, at least two places for your family to meet that you've identified for, for everyone in your family. And also have an out-of-state contact that, somebody that you can call in case something happens here in this state that ties up all the phone lines, that you have one central relative that you can talk to. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chief Ashby, I just wanted to thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for your service. As the new city council member in this case appointed to the Orange County Fire Authority, I want to thank the entire department for what they do and kind of speak a little bit more about the 72 hours of preparedness that we all need to think about. That's food, that's water, especially water, water on hand, and also the ability to filter it. That is illumination, that is the ability to create a flame if possible, and also to put it out. You mentioned fire extinguishers. Thank you. Lot of folks wait to the last minute, wait till there's a, there's a crisis, and they don't know how to use a fire extinguisher. There are very, very simple videos that take just minutes to watch on YouTube. Please watch those. Also, the ability to turn off your residential gas. It's a very simple thing to do, and it can save lives, and it can save homes. On top of that, I want to talk about paperwork. People wait to the last minute, and they don't have copies of their paperwork off-site. If their house burns down and their paperwork's there, it can be challenging and cause a big delay in their ability to file a claim. Obviously, most folks know who they're insured with, but nonetheless, it's important to document, document, document. Thank you again for your service. Thank you for the reminder.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just mention that I have, if you could catch us briefly tomorrow, I have a resident I need to have you contact with in the morning, so if you would take the time to give me a call in the morning.
Okay, now we'll move on to public hearings. Our first hearing is the review to waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions of the, on the agenda. Staff, please give the staff report.
This is the regular item you'll see every agenda. It's attended to recommendation to move, to waive the reading in full of ordinances, of all the ordinances to, in reading a full, to allow us to move in an expeditious manner. And it is something that we do each and every council meeting, so we'd recommend approval.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Don't we have public comment?
Was there any public comment? I'm sorry. Thank you for the reminder. Any public comment? Okay. Hearing done, please vote.
We have a 5-0 vote in favor. Again, we have, the results are posted there behind you on the screen.
Excuse me just a moment.
Were they posted on the television also?
They're not at this point. We are, we're going to have that in right now. Yeah. There they are now.
The next item is a hearing on the animal control amendments, or the code amendments. Staff, can you please give our, your staff report?
This is a item to, purpose is basically to amend our ordinances to be consistent with the animal control ordinances of the county of Orange. As you'll recall, we are a contract city. In other words, we contract with the county of Orange to provide animal control and sheltering services. As such, they enforce our ordinances. And typically, our ordinances are very deferential to them. For instance, our fee structure is approved by them. Many, most of our codes are very, are very much deferential to them. What's happened in the past is our ordinances have been parallel to theirs, so when they make changes, we need to make changes. So we've gone kind of a step further this year because the county has made a number of changes that they can identify when, when we get to that point. But basically, they've made a number of changes and asked us to make changes to bring our ordinances consistent with theirs so that they're basically, when they cross from one city to another, they're not enforcing different ordinances or different activities. These are primarily related to vicious dog program, dangerous dog, et cetera, barking dog ordinances, and processes of how they handle those. What we've done with respect to our ordinances is we've made them very, the wording has not been a verbatim wording it has in the past. We've made them deferential so that we, by reference.
Incorporation.
Incorporation. We, when they make changes, our changes are made. We have, the one section I would say is, there is a section that we have in the past had a different and a more stringent, I believe, set of ordinances, and that has to do with birds, aviaries, those types of things. So those ordinances have remained intact, but with respect to the rest of them, we are recommending that we do move ahead forward with the county's ordinance changes. Dr. Jennifer Hawkins, the Director of Orange County Animal Care, is here to answer any questions about the changes they've made. So in the event that you do have questions, she can certainly answer the details why or what the process would be. But in essence, what we're trying to do is what every city is doing, and they've asked every contract city, to basically bring our ordinances into alignment so that we aren't, you know, at one city trying to enforce something, and they go across the boundary and say, oops, you're in a different city. We've got to enforce a different ordinance as things along those lines. So again, Dr. Hawkins and myself are available to answer questions. This is the first reading of the ordinances. Our second reading would be at the following council meeting, so we're available to answer questions.
Dr. Hawkins, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
She's very high. Good evening, city council members. I'm Dr. Jennifer Hawkins, Director of OC Animal Care. Mr. Franks is correct in that we just want to ensure consistency of delivery of our services and to make sure that if there are any discrepancies that you wish to keep in place, we're notified so we can clarify our roles. That is true, we have had a couple of codes that we have updated with the county late last year and early this year. The aggressive dog code for potentially dangerous and vicious has some changes, and I'm happy to go into detail on those if you should like, as well as the barking dog ordinance.
Okay. Council members, do you have any questions of staff or Dr. Hawkins?
I just want to reiterate that there is not any increases to the fees for the residents of the city of Villa Park.
No, this, this is not a, there are no fees at this point, and no, you know, if, if indeed this, the county were to approve fees, those fees would be enacted by the county of Orange, and they would do a public hearing process to do so. That's not part of this at this point. No process has changed. There's nothing, nothing changed at all with respect to the fees at this point.
There are some cities that did change their fees with this. I think Fullerton is one.
Correct.
Because I spent some time with them. So just to, so I fully understand it. If we, and I don't want to, if we wanted to, our fees could be different than yours. I'm assuming they couldn't be lower, but they could be higher.
They, that is correct. So we do have a auditor controller just completed a very detailed fee study for OC Animal Care. They did identify some fees that are, the actual cost would be higher than what we currently have on our fee resolution. Most of our fees are below actual cost, and individual cities do have the opportunity to offer lower fees, if they should wish, than the county does. City of Lake Forest offers a lower dog license fee, for example, or they can elect higher than the county so long as it doesn't exceed the actual cost.
And how far are we from a new facility?
We will be moving in mid-March.
Wonderful, wonderful.
And I would, I would say that there'll be, I've been advised that there'll be an opening, and I would expect that all council members and the public will have a, very much an opportunity to see it.
Well, having toured it with you for several hours a couple of years ago, it couldn't happen any sooner because the conditions in which humans are working, forget that where the dogs and cats are, is just deplorable. I don't understand how they allow county people, how they allowed you to work there.
And I appreciate that you did come and see the facility. I invite anyone who is interested in touring the, the current facility, there is a, it is night and day.
Yes.
And there are so many things that are, we're actively trying to keep this one going until we can make that move that is still targeted for mid-March, grand opening late March, and we have some tours planned for prior to opening as well.
The current facility was constructed in 1940?
Around 41 is what I'm told.
And if you, actually, there's a bit of history, having had that. Dr. Bauer is listed there. That used to be his residence. He was built right before World War II. He lived on the second floor, and they actually still refer to the second floor as the residence, but his name is on the outside. He was the county's first pound master is what they referred to him at the time. So things have changed, our realities have changed, and our population has changed. So we're very fortunate to be able to deal with Dr. Hawkins and the county staff. We actually have a lieutenant in field services as well back there, and we're very fortunate. They're, they're the guys you see out in the streets, so it's a, it's a tough job, but somebody's got to do it, and they do well.
Well, I hope that the, once they build it, that the county continues to maintain it, which I think was, that was the issue here. I realize it was old, but to see, they didn't maintain it.
Yes.
I mean, if you don't clean your house, it gets dirty, and that's what occurred. So I hope that they spent all this money and that the public is aware of it and put some pressure on it to make sure that we keep the new facility, because we're paying a lot for it.
Yes, that's our intent, is to make it a, make it a facility that lasts for a significant period of time and is a pleasant place for animals and people alike.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak at this hearing? Okay, hearing done. Thank you. Council members, is there any other further discussion regarding this item?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion on this matter?
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote. Would you please read the results?
We have a 5-0 vote in affirmative. Before we leave the item, I just wanted to thank Eileen Doe, who took a lot of the work on this one, worked and worked with Todd, our city attorney, to, to get this together and move forward. So we're one of the first cities to actually be in alignment with the county's request they sent out in November, so we really, I just wanted to pass along a bit of a thank you there.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll now consider the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items you would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Number 10.
I'm sorry.
Number 10.
And I would like nine and 10 also.
I have agenda items nine and 10 removed from the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the items?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Please record your vote.
Pass this by a 5-0 vote.
Thank you. We'll now take up the other items that were pulled for discussion. The first one is item nine, consideration of Villa Park Community Services Foundation Committee appointments.
I have a question here. I remember that there were several members who were up for appointment, and is Andy Mills the only one who wanted to continue?
We, this, these, I believe, we checked, validated these, and this is where we are.
Okay, so only, okay, so.
The only one that is at this point needing reappointment is Andy Mills, I believe.
Oh, that would, that would be hard. That means the rest of the board members all come due at the same time.
Yeah, we had a number of multiple, member have added over the years.
I thought there were several.
There were several letters that we received, so, and I understand, I mean, they have to, they have to tell you.
Right. So everybody has continued, well, we have several people that have opted not to continue.
Okay.
That would have.
So there's going to be some openings?
Yes, there will be some openings.
There were several that came through. Okay, and have you notified the foundation? Because I have a meeting tomorrow, that's why.
They, they'll be notified after you take action today. That's, the council will take action first, and then they'll be notified.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, having only one come in was a little bit.
There'll be, there'll be two vacancies that will show up.
Okay. All right, and.
I had a question on that. Wasn't there nine that's on there that's to be renewed next year?
Uh, yeah, one, two, three, four. That's nine. That'll be nine next year.
It would seem as though you'd have half each year.
These people, a lot of them have been appointed midterm or whatever the course would have been, so their term is a two-year term when they were appointed, so there've been some transition, some whatever. So at this point, this is sort of staggers out where, it probably started that way, but where it's landed is where we're at right now.
We probably need to re-stagger them then by pointing someone to one, one-year terms.
That's the prerogative of the council, should they.
I would, I would think that's what we do, want to have half.
You'll have nine of them coming next year, and you can redo it.
You got one this year and nine next year.
Well, we would have had three this year, but.
No, two declined. Two declined.
Two declined, so we would have three renewals this year, so, right.
But I would recommend that we, the next, next time that we do this, we stagger them.
It's, I'll take direction from the council at that point. You know.
Okay, I move it with that. It was a discussion that I wanted on that.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote. Steve, would you please read the results?
We have a 5-0 vote affirmatively.
Okay. The next item is item number nine, consideration of, excuse me, excuse me, number eight.
Number 10.
Number 10, I'm sorry.
Number 10.
Consideration of Infrastructure Management Advisory Committee appointment.
Reason I ask that, pulled, Ms. Page here. Hi, Paige.
Hi there, I'm Dylan.
How are you?
Okay, so you can see my face.
Just thought maybe you'd come up and tell us a little bit about yourself and your background and.
Yeah, of course. I actually grew up in the city of Villa Park. I just moved back in September. Excited to be back. Excited to be back. Came from Washington. I was working up there. Decided to be closer to family. I have a background in utility design. I'm a civil engineer by trade. I work in the construction management sector right now, and looking for ways to get involved in the city, and this infrastructure management committee is definitely in my wheelhouse, so excited to be involved.
Okay. It was very nice to meet you, and welcome back to the city.
Thank you.
The only other question I have is, we seem to have multiple people from the same firm involved on the committee?
There is another person from Somus on the committee, which is who I currently work for. I will actually be terminating my contract with them on Friday. I'm starting with a new firm on Monday morning.
Okay, okay.
And that company is a global company. They, they, they couldn't be further apart. We, we consider that. Thank you.
We actually met at the first meeting.
We met at the meeting on Thursday morning.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I have some questions also, because your name has come up several times over the course of me being on council. I understand that Councilman Colacott mentored you, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, so, he's my neighbor. Yeah, he is my neighbor, and he actually connected me with my former boss, who is Public Works Director over at the City of Lakewood, and I worked for her for multiple summers, so.
Okay, all right. And how did you come about this? Did Mr. Colacott call you and ask you?
You know, I heard about it, because, you know, we walk our dogs on the street, and, you know, he told me about it. And actually, I know somebody at the city who works there too, and they said it'd be a good way for me to get involved. They knew I'd just moved back, and I was interested, and like I said, it's in my wheelhouse, so here I am.
And you live on Feather Hill Drive also, correct?
I do, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
I would just like to state for the record, I couldn't be more impressed with her qualifications, her energy, her composure. I wish I was that composed at such a young age, so kudos to you. Well done.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Any further questions? No, you have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Votes are in. There's a 4-1 vote with councilwoman Fastinelli voting no.
Okay, thank you very much, Paige.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving on to new business. Our first item of new business is revisions to the Articles of Incorporation for the Willa Park Community Services Foundation. Staff, could you please provide our staff report?
Yeah, this is an item that's come up, and it's been in the workings for probably the last year or so with the change in governance for the foundation. One of the things that we realized in working with Crystal Miles, who's the governance board member on the foundation, that the bylaws and the Articles of Incorporation are not in fact consistent. They are in fact very much inconsistent in a number of areas. Articles of incorporation are basically those documents filed with the Secretary of State that establish the foundation as a 501(c)(3) status, that names basically the composition of the board and what the primary function would be. The bylaws are the operating activities that subsequently run the day-to-day operations of the foundation. The bylaws have been changed on a number of occasions where the Articles of Incorporations had not been changed. So in, in realizing this, there were still some things we were technically not in compliance with our Articles of Incorporation by the way in which we were operating. In other words, the mayor had to be the, a good example, the mayor had to be the designee on the foundation, which has not been the practice for a number of years. There are a number of other things, and I will mention too, that, for instance, the original order of the Articles of Incorporations included a clause that said, "No spouse of a council member can be a, on the foundation board." Well, the bylaws have subsequently, over the course of the years, had been changed. The Articles had never been changed. So one of the things that the, both Crystal and myself raised and brought up and said, "We need to change this and go get these consistent." So there's a two-step process. There'll be bringing the Articles of Incorporations first, filing those with the Secretary of State, amending those. Secondarily, coming back to the council with the bylaw changes. So the provision, for instance, that is, that would not allow a spouse of a board member to be in the original Articles, the foundation voted to keep that clause in the Articles of Incorporation, which would mean the bylaws would subsequently have to be changed as part of those to go back and change that. So there's a number of.
Can you repeat that?
So the Articles of Incorporations would say, as originally they said, there would be no spouses of council members on the board.
Right, because they didn't change when they changed the bylaws.
Yes. So that's, the council, I mean, sorry, the foundation, when they approved the article revisions, they left that provision as part of, as originally stated, with the understanding that the bylaws would then have to be amended back to where they were before they were amended in 2013.
And are we working with the right bylaws? Because.
Yes. We are, we've gone back and done extensive condition.
Because the foundation did change the wrong bylaws.
Yeah, in 2013, there were some changes. 2016, there were subsequent changes. So what we need to do is, we need to start with the Articles, clean the Articles, get to where they want to be, and then make the changes to the bylaws. So the foundation approved these in November as a revisions, and you could subsequently expect the bylaws to be coming back with revisions when we bring those into line or alignment. So that's where we are at this point. The foundation again approved these actions, these recommendations in November, I believe, because in December, there was no meeting. So it was November, and our bylaws will come back probably in March or April, depending on when we can get to it, and I guess when Little League season eases up a little bit for some of the board members. But that's where we are at this point, so that's a step. And Todd has reviewed those things, so some of the clarifications are simply wording clarifications that, you know, terminology was a little bit different in some of the past language and whatnot. So we're trying to clean that up. You'll notice that probably the only other substantive change is that the current bylaws say no less than nine members. The Articles of Incorporations would say seven members, but the appointment, it's no less than, so the council has authority to point, you know, 11, 12, whatever the number, the council would feel appropriate, but no less than seven. And again, the board of the foundation thought that the number seven made sense based on the number of their officers. So that was a conscious decision to go to seven.
Now, in these articles, it does say it's a 501(c)(3), and I believe it's a 501(c)(3)(9). The, when I looked them up under the IRS skyline, because only 50% of the donations are deductible. And that's something that, and when I looked, it went on, well, that's what the IRS has. So, and that might need to be fixed.
That's not correct.
I went to the IRS and.
Todd, what's your, you had something on that?
Excuse me, hold on a second. When I went to the IRS site, because I've been questioning that for a couple of years to get it corrected, so as long as we're correcting this, we should correct all of it. Because as it stands right now, only 50% is deductible according to the IRS.
That's not correct.
Mr. Mayor, I see.
Mr. Mayor, I think our city attorney had something to say on that.
Right, well, this question was raised a couple of years ago, and I had our tax expert look at it, and that's a variation of the tax of the nonprofit code, which is inapplicable to Willa Park Community Foundation. If you donate to Willa Park Community Foundation, it's 100% tax deductible.
Then why isn't the, why aren't we fixing it with the IRS?
There's nothing to fix with the IRS.
When you go to the Willa Park Community Service Foundation, it lists it as only being 50% deductible. It actually lists it. I want it to be fixed.
What are you looking at?
If you go, if you go down, call the IRS, look at their tax ID number, and it's listed as being, there's a particular word for it, and it says that only 50% of the donations are deductible. I'm looking for it to just be fixed. It's been a couple of years. You know, somebody contact the IRS and fix it.
Okay, well, I am saying, though, we've looked at this, and as for tax purposes, if you donate to the foundation, it's 100% tax deductible, because it's for charitable purpose under this code section, and we've analyzed that issue, and my understanding, it's correct. But I will check with our tax people again to make sure.
We can certainly contact.
And have it changed, have the IRS change it.
Yeah, I think the issue is not with the Articles of Incorporation, because it's filed as a 501(c)(3). The issue would be a clarification with the IRS.
Correct.
And we can certainly make that action, but that's secondary to this, and we'll clarify with the attorney on that and work with them. But that would be secondary, this is, it has been filed as a 501(c)(3) with the Secretary of State. So that's the status where we're at. If the IRS has recorded something differently, that's an error that would need to be corrected, or we'll figure out what the.
That's what I'm saying. All I did was take this, go to the IRS. IRS has something different.
We could certainly check to see what that.
And they need to be the same.
Okay, any further questions from the council members? Any, anybody from the public that would like to comment on this item? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Please vote.
That passes on a 5-0 vote.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, we'll now move to agenda item 14. We'll now discuss the city manager report.
It's sort of, we're nearing in on my first year here. One of the things we're trying to do is sort of refine, and I've been giving you a list in the past. That list is getting voluminous, and even I look at it and start saying, "Well, what's left to do?" So I've started marking on that list, and you'll start seeing a red and a green. You'll see green as sort of completed. Red means pending items, so that's sort of, you can track it a little easier. The other thing you're going to see there, although it is not completed at this point, because there's a lot to fill in, we're going to start estimating project hours per task, so that when things are assigned, we'll be able to say estimated. Now, again, it'll be a back-of-the-envelope estimate on some of these, but we'll be able to do that. So the, we're sort of evolving this. One, I want to focus on what's available to do, so where you have red is what's left, or things to do. What's green is we've accomplished. You know, I would like to add that, I would like to say that we went down in the number of items that are pending, but unfortunately, they tend to go up, so our percentages go up. So I think what I want to be able to communicate to you, and the point of giving you project hours is, there's only so many hours per day, and there's so many staff members per day that have those hours. So I'd like to be able to give some sort of idea for you. This is the resource requirement that's going to be associated, and then at some point, we can, you know, sort of give you a perspective. Well, why is this not being done? Well, it's because this has so many, you know, the task takes long, et cetera. So I think what you're going to see is, we're evolving a little bit more, and I'd like to communicate more to the council and give you that information. So the estimated project hours is a column that is there. It has not been completed. That's something that I'm starting to work with staff, and it's, it's something that I hope will improve communications. The other thing I would like to share with you is that Frank Davies, I can introduce him here for those of you who haven't met him, but on, anywhere on, on the radio, or TV, or whatever you're watching it on. It is streaming, it's working. So Frank has joined us as of January 5th. He's hit the ground running. He had met the first payroll, so he's a hero to staff. And he's, he's came in and said, "I did one thing right," and he was very pleased. The banks now recognize him, so that's another good thing, so they don't call me and say, "Somebody's messing with your accounts," which they did the first couple of days. So we're making tremendous progress, and I'm really proud to do, to say so. The other thing you'll notice is a few new faces. The semester started at Cal State Fullerton, and they're sending us a few interns to get credit at no cost. Now, Eileen is a paid intern, but, but she's a student. We also have some students that you'll see that are getting credit only, and we tease Eileen, there'll be her replacements at some point, or whatever. But again, we're getting some project work done. So hopefully, when we see some of those project hours, we have people that can do some of those things. But you're going to start to see those. So five days a week now, you'll have a volunteer intern from Cal State Fullerton, that a couple of different bodies will be filling that in, partial days. So we're, those are either seniors or graduate students that we're seeing, so we're really pleased. And there's, Cal State Fullerton does have a monopoly. They've just been the first one to start their semester for the spring and send us their students. We'll certainly take Chapman, or UCI, or whoever else might be interested. But, so anyway, we're available to answer any questions. I just wanted to give you those sort of quick to-dos.
Question, I'm assuming that the, by putting the hours on there, that we're able to then take a look at and prioritize the level of effort that's going to take place to do some of these items. The other thing I would ask that you do is take a look at any external cost or cost associated with those items.
Sure.
That we have to incur to do that survey or whatever. If you have to go out and hire someone, I'd like at least some kind of ballpark estimate or something along that line, so that we understand cost plus, plus level of effort that it takes to do those things.
We'll do that. That's a good, that's a good addition.
I have some items here. I want to go to item 29 and 30. I know that we did vote on these developmental standards, but there was some language that needed to be put on those to.
We approved those in the most recent agenda items, last couple of months. You'll find that we took those actions in December and November.
Right, and, but one of the, when I did approve it, we were going to have language on there too, that was a little bit bold, that said that they were only guidelines.
Those have been.
And I haven't seen that language. If possibly you could provide that to me email.
Sure, we'd be happy to.
That would be great on that. I have a question on. Just one second, let me get this for you. Item 105. Reviewing ADA requirements. Is there, is there, have we been contacted by the ACLU? Or have a claim into the city or something?
No. Mayor Colacott brought this item to our attention. He had been contacted by several residents, and I don't want to speak for him, but his, his communication to me was that there was some concern specifically along, Serrano Feather Hill area, that there was some concern about some of our lack of curb cuts, if you will, for handicapped access. And he asked that we look into that. I have had a discussion with our city engineer, who said it is something that has not been inventoried. We have not been contacted by any other external body, but it's something that is, that we are by mandate required to do certain things. So we are, that was a request. I'll let him speak to who initiated those or whatever. But, but the city engineer did indicate that it is something that we should be conscious of, just like we have ADA requirements in our restrooms that we've dealt with. We have ADA requirements in streets and things. Now typically, those have been dealt on an isolated basis here at 1 and 2, and not in a systematic way. But my discussion with the city engineer is, it's maybe, let's look and see what we have to do, and maybe we need to do it a systematic way, or let's figure out what needs to be done. We don't have a lot of curbs in some areas. We do in some areas, we don't. There are some situations that we need to maybe address sooner and some later. And that's what I've sort of said, I've asked Akram to give me sort of an idea of what we're talking about. So at that point, that's sort of, on 105, that's sort of what we're looking at. There is, he did mention too, the state and some of these other entities allow money, federal money, to do some of these cuts and things. So I asked him to give me some idea of what that is and where it is. So we're, we're in the research stage at this point, but that was based on an inquiry from Mayor Colacott.
Yes.
The general rule is, under the ADA, ADA was adopted in '92, I believe. You do not have to make roadway improvements unless you're reconstructing or rebuilding a street. That's the general rule. If you do do that, then you have to put in the curb cuts, so that's the state of the law generally.
I just don't want the barn door open.
No, but we are, the issue is, we are doing a number of road improvements and things like that. And that's where he said, where we're doing improvements, we ought to be looking at that.
Oh, we do that.
Yes, and he suggested that we look at some of those things. And so we kind of got to get a feel of where we are at, and that's sort of the discussion I had with the mayor.
Okay. And then item 93, property data sent to insurance provider on 12/15. What was that?
That was.
I just don't remember.
That was a number of incidents. We've had, we had an accident that occurred. You recall that somebody hit one of our fence posts along the way, our trail posts, and we filed with insurance, and I think the discussion at that point was ensuring and that we forward all the data. I take that back. That was, that was not a fence post. That was the tree falling in the winds that fell down on Valley Avenue, the pine tree. So we forwarded the property information on that down to, to the insurance company. In event that the individual filed a claim against us, we felt it was appropriate. We should have the information available. A claim has not been filed, but the insurance company has been notified.
In the future, can you provide the council with, a claim is probably not a good word, but something that, when you do submit it to the insurance company, so where, or if we received any claim. I know that a lot of this, that's how most of the cities handle it, and we haven't had that. It would be beneficial if you could just.
Sure.
You know, on a monthly or quarterly basis, whatever it might be.
We get a log, we get a log every, every month of any open claim or things that can also.
I'd appreciate it, just kind of put it on the, on the list. That would be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. City manager, are there any further reports?
No, I'm exhausted. I'm good.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your informative reports. Okay, now we will discuss the council member requested item. Let's see, the reorganization of the Community Development and Public Safety Committee. Staff, can you please provide your report?
This is a continuation, so I, I don't want to necessarily speak for the council, but this was an item that was previously heard by the council. And at that time, the council asked a number of questions and asked that we come back. This was a proposal by Councilman Rosini, Mayor Protem Rosini, and Mayor Colacott at that time, councilmen and Mayor Protem, not that order, but basically you get the message, that we changed the function of the Community Development, Public Safety Committee because the duties have expanded, and that their proposal was to create a, three different committees, Public Works and Engineering, Public Safety, and a Community Development Committee in lieu of that one committee to handle all three. What I have added, I would say, is I've added a, the question at time was some staffing cost implications. There are some cost implications to it. It's back of the envelope, depending on, I say that because it depends on how often they meet, when they meet, and what sort of requirements that their follow-up, like I believe Councilman Pitts said sometimes, you know, or you mentioned if they're meeting in the morning or if they're daytime. So for instance, a normal daytime meeting during hours of regular staff work, then you're not going to add extra hours if you have to bring a consultant. If you have to bring a consultant in at different hours in the evening, it's going to cost more, and those types of things. I would offer to, and this is something here that I mentioned in here, that our planning director, our building officials are part-time, so he's hourly, and our city engineer are contract employees. So, we pay extra for them to come in on evening hours. Now, there's a balance that you want to weigh between citizen participation and what is productivity. I'm going to just venture to guess, and while I would say, my experience over this last year is that we don't gain an awful lot by having meetings in the evening, except I get some tired employees. Because citizen participation tends to be somewhat minimal, unless it's an issue where people are involved, and there's a noticed issue. We sort of know those ahead of time, and those get highlighted. But as a general rule, for instance, on a LEAC meeting, I don't know that we've had a public person attend that, maybe begun, Nicole has maybe, or a couple have attended here and there, but typically, if they have issues or something, it's that, that's it. So that's something that the council needs to weigh in on, because there is a cost, and it changes the cost ratios. In other words, if you have a meeting at night, staff come, you know, it changes the dynamics a little bit. Secondarily, I would say, I'm on a salary, and Kim is on salaries and things, so to the extent that my time, you know, I work those hours, I work those hours, but it changes my resource availability for other projects that are on that 107 or 108 list item. So to the extent that I'm doing, attending these meetings or participating, it changes availability, so it's sort of an opportunity cost, if you will, and I would share that with you, because that's something that you ought to think about, is, you know, I'm one person, we don't have a lot of one persons beside myself, so to the extent that any one of us are doing that, you know, it means we can't do something else. And it is, you know, this is a challenge to try and get a lot of these things done in a timely manner, and I see that list growing, I think I should, I should do that one, but it's like, I don't have those time, those hours. So I would, I would offer that in your consideration. So those, that was sort of a discussion we had, last time this came up, was what's the cost, what's the implication? So, I would just in summary say that the issue would be the hours that you want to do them, if you, you know, if you want to have these, like we had the infrastructure management meeting at 7:30. That's a very minimal, I'm here at 7 o'clock, and, you know, I will be here, whatever, that's not a problem. Our city engineer was here during normal operations, it wasn't a problem. If we have it at night, that would cost us a different amount of money. So there's ways we can do this, but I sort of want to keep that in mind. The proliferation of meetings can just wear us thin at some point, and, you know, we can't do a lot of, you know, we get a lot of assignments, we're all invigorated, and the committee members come on, they're excited, and staff look at me like, "Oh, my gosh, I just added four more things I got to do," and, you know, so that's sort of, I just want to temper that into your consideration. We certainly agree, and I'll do whatever the council wants to do on this one, and I defer to your judgment, but that's sort of my input back to you relative to some of the discussions we have in the past.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Rosini?
I want to thank you for your comments on that. I think that it kind of takes some guts to say that, and I think, I'd like to thank Robbie for pointing out, you know, the cost as a consideration. At the same time, I think that with intelligent planning, with keeping in mind staff time, as well as frankly, our residents, our resident volunteers, that make up a lot of these committees, or attend these committees, and that we all have in our city. Initially, if we're starting a committee, I think the startup costs are quite high in time. You're going to have quite a few back-to-back, to-back monthly meetings, but once things get up and running, I think the trend is to go towards every other month, or even perhaps quarterly, depending upon the needs of our community and the needs of the committee. So I want to thank you for bringing those to our attention, and thank Robbie for his point of view on this, and I think it's well said. I think that if we are intelligent about this, the costs are minimal compared to the gain and the involvement that we will get, because the problems our community is facing are not shrinking, they're growing. We're dealing with things that perhaps were ignored in the past, or were less important to our residents, and now are coming more to the forefront. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments from council members?
Yes, I have a comment.
Councilwoman Fassinelli?
The Community Development Committee has been around probably about maybe 10 years, and I served on it, I think, two or three years. And it worked very well for the city, and it morphed by the people who were on the committee. And things were added, and added, and added, instead of just CUPs, instead of just variances. All of a sudden, we had updates on everything that went on in the city, which wasn't what the CDC was supposed to be. So we're taking one committee meeting, and we're making three. Our city manager has a duty to tell us if it's going to be a burden within the city with our small staff. So, I'm not proud of you for saying it to us, it's a requirement you tell us, because thank you very much, because you know what? This is a lot. It's going to be a lot of time to have three different committees, and you're asking three staff members, you're asking three council people, you're asking advisory committees, and I'm not quite sure why. You've got a public safety committee, which, public safety's been falling under LEAC. I'm not sure why we need a public safety committee. Public Works and Engineering Committee, you just have an infrastructure committee. I mean, we're making new committees, the CDC didn't take care of those issues, so I just want to reiterate here that we had one committee. Sometimes we didn't have enough stuff to meet. And in fact, it was documented how long the meetings were for the last year, and some of them only went 20 minutes. So I'm not quite sure why we need three meetings. I do object to this. I don't think it's a need of our residents, I think that we serve them very well with the CDC, and I'd like to see just one committee stay as it is versus having three. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Once again, I brought this up in the last council meeting, you know, for the city manager's sake, as well as the staff's sake, making sure that we have balance in work and also private lives, you know. I'm surprised, honestly, that a city this small has 100 and some odd items that we're focused on, that we feel are priority for our city manager. I also am concerned that a city this small has this many committees, and this much level of effort to maintain the city the way it should be. That says something to me. But I think this is overkill, I don't think we need it. One committee can serve everything, as it has in the past for I don't know how many years. I'm not a historian, but I don't believe that we need the things that we've got here. So I'm not in favor, simply because I just don't, I think it's overkill.
Okay, any other comments from councilmen? Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this item? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion, or is there any further discussion?
So moved.
Okay, second? I'll second it. Would you please record your vote?
That passes with a 3-2 vote. Councilman Pitts and Councilwoman Fassinelli voting no.
Thank you. And while we've discussed the consideration of 2018 City Council Committee assignments, consistent with our longstanding procedure, staff distributed questionnaires to determine interest and appointment to participate in committees to our council members. It should be noted that participation on committees is voluntary. Council members may indicate both these committees, those committees, which they'd like to participate, as well as those they do not. Both were indicated in the questionnaires submitted. In making my recommendations for appointments, I interpreted a blank response as a willingness to participate. At the December council meeting, representatives of the, to the Orange County Vector Control District and the Orange County Fire Authority were selected, and those representatives were noted on the questionnaires distributed. Also, subsequent to the distribution of the questionnaires, I asked staff to request council members to indicate their interest in appointments as city delegates to the Southern California Association of Governments and the League of Cities. These organizations represent cities in addressing regional and statewide issues. As no responses were received, I concluded that all council members were open to appointments as delegates. So at this point, I'd like to take comments from council members.
You said something just now, you said you didn't get any input from us?
Not on the SCAG or the League of Cities.
Well, that request came afterwards, and that's after the initial request.
Correct.
And also, that's never been requested before, because we don't know who's going to go to, travel to that. The mayor's never asked for those prior, because we don't know who's going to travel to that, so that's, you did that on your own.
Yeah, I did, and I'd like to know what your interest is, and...
Well, that's a travel issue, that's a matter of whether or not people are going to go. So...
Well, if you indicate that you'd like to be the delegate, then certainly we, I would expect that you'd arrange your travel.
I didn't indicate.
Okay.
Nobody did. If nobody answered you, nobody indicated. So you shouldn't be assigning people to something that you don't know if they're going to be going, and the mayor's never done that. You took it upon yourself to assign people, but that's, I mean, we don't have to go. If we don't go, there'll be another delegate.
Exactly, and just like with the...
But, don't think that a no answer is that we want to participate.
There were a number of blank responses to committee assignments, and I interpreted all the blank responses as, maybe not that would be your first interest in being in appointment, but that you'd be willing to participate on any of the committees.
I never received a phone call from you, asking me.
Okay, are there any other comments? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this item? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion, or is there any further discussion?
I'd like to move this.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, if there's been a motion and a second, please vote. Steve, would you please read the results?
That passes with a 4 to 1 vote, with Councilman Pitts voting no.
Okay, now it is time to hear individual council member information items, starting with our Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Rosini. Do you have any reports or comments to share?
No reports. I really just want to thank so many of our community members for volunteering for the various organizations that make our community great. Couple that I can think of, the Community Services Foundation, of course, and Villa Park Little League. We're about ready to start the next season of Villa Park Little League, and so many, so many young kids, boys and girls, are excited. And it would not be possible without the parent volunteers, the cooperation of the school district, and our city. And it's just an honor to represent our residents and be a part of that, and I look forward to seeing everybody out there opening day. And forgive me if I'm shouting a little bit louder for a couple of kids. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Fassinelli?
I'm going to make a comment, and I don't want to go into detail, but the public shouldn't assume why people do things up here. As far as Councilman Pitts not standing up for a distinguished person that has been picked by the mayor and not the city, I have no idea. And why I didn't was truly justified, but I will not go into personal reasons here. But a distinguished person is picked by the mayor, it's not picked by the council. And that's very, very important for everyone. Do not assume what happens. I am a little shocked to think right now that we're doing another traffic study on Featherhill and Serrano. That's shocking to me. There were four accidents in, what, six days, at my corner. Four. One of them, the sheriff's car had to be towed, one of them, the other car had to be towed, the third one made it to the driveway, but had to be towed. The fourth one took off on its rims. Four serious accidents where the cars were damaged, and nothing is being done. But we're having another traffic study done on Serrano and Featherhill. If we add up how much money has been spent on Serrano and Featherhill, there should be nobody, nobody should be working for the city, because we haven't done our job. All that money for nothing. The striping, the stop signs, I hear that we're going to have more patrolling over there. We have an entire other part of the city that needs patrolling, not just Serrano and Featherhill. We have people who are speeding down Taft Avenue, who are speeding down Valley. Let's not go back down that road again, that all that matters is Featherhill and Serrano. Because we have an entire big elementary school that has 600 kids over at Villa Park Elementary, and it seems that nobody seems to care about that. You know, we have a town center here that has accidents, no one cares. So, I'm surprised that we're doing another traffic study. I think that's probably about the sixth one we've done, and in so many years. I want to let everyone know that I appreciate the young lady who applied to be on our infrastructure committee. The reason I didn't want to appoint you is because after plotting some of the most recent appointments to all of our committees, there seems to be kind of a saturation of appointments that are connected to Councilman Colacott, and are also living in the same vicinity of Councilman Colacott. So, a little diversion and diversity actually is needed among the city, and I'd like to reach out to other people that maybe don't live around Councilman Colacott. Measure S Oversight Committee is tomorrow. It is at OUSD's. A little update for everyone, of course, the bond has not been issued, because if it was issued, you all would have seen it on your property taxes, but the bond, again, is not going to be issued, probably be about a year, unless the ties do turn. One thing I want to let everyone know is, part of the reason that the bond hasn't been issued, first for financial reasons, but second, the design process of the high schools are not done yet. And that was something that was a little bit misunderstood by the public, that there's still design work to be done. And that comes from how the building looks, to how the parking lot's going to look. I mean, it's everything. And that was something that most people thought was over, and it's not quite over. But they're making progress, they're working slow, they're not spending a whole lot of money, so there isn't much for the Oversight Committee to actually look at, because the only thing we can look at is what money they've actually spent. So until the bond is issued, we don't have much say, but we get an update. So it is a public meeting, it is at, I think it's at 6, it might be at 5, tomorrow at OUSD, if anybody wants to come. It's not very exciting, but we certainly welcome you, and anything that is done there will go on the OUSD website. As far as that goes, I think I gave a pretty good report on the homeless issue in San Antonio, so that's all I have for today.
Councilman Pitts?
Well, once again, I feel that people making statements about me are encumbered by fact. You don't know me, you don't know what's in my heart or in my mind, so you don't know why I did what I did. No, you don't know, and first of all, gentlemen up here, that situation had nothing to do with political differences that we have, absolutely nothing. I'm going to reserve, I'm going to reserve saying why I sat and did this for keeping the peace, but I reserve the right to bring this up later. There were discussions in our strategic planning meeting that involved those two individuals. They were against my better judgment. So, I sat because in protest for what they stood for, nothing else. And I am not playing a political game here, and I don't appreciate being accused, "You assumed along with us as else that it had something to do between me and the free gentleman up here." It doesn't, not anything. So I would appreciate it when people say something, that they do it factually, and not by assuming things, because you know what assume does to all of us, and it's not good. I don't have any committee reports, because I didn't attend any of this time, so, that's all.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
I had a, yeah, my, I want to show you something that I found on the internet that happened last week, in fact, on January 19th. It's called Executive... It's called Executive Next Practices Forum. They did a special forum on next practices in strategic plan execution in 2018. It was held along with Chapman University and Chapman University's MBA Alumni Association. Now, the next, the next Executive Next Practices Forum is an established network of Fortune 5000 C-level and key executive leaders. By C-levels, I mean CEO, COO, CFO, CMO, and CIO and human resources who meet to review first look innovation, business and leadership strategies. At this, presented this forum was the interim dean of Chapman School of Business Economics, the Chapman University School of Business Economics Director for the Center of Economic Research, the executive vice president of California Bank and Trusts, and the managing director of On Strategy. On Strategy helps clients build strategic executions, best practice to develop sustainable advantages to enable business growth. Included in this esteemed group of strategic planners was Jim McComb, managing director of Wild Card Strategies and a certified strategic management professional by Associated Strategic Planning. Jim is also a senior vice president and practice leader of strategic planning with the Executive Next Practice Forum. I just want to bring this up because Jim, last month, helped us complete a strategic planning process with the city council here. I think he did an exceptional job in strategic planning based on his excellent background. I just want to make you aware of how qualified Jim was to do our strategic plan.
Director Cruz, Mike.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. My report is, this morning I attended the State of the County address by the Supervisor Doe, Supervisor Andrew Doe, who's the chairman of the Board of Supervisors. He gave an excellent presentation, it was very well received. There were a number of other mayors and others in, in the audience. What really struck me about his presentation is the, the focus of the county. The focus, which is really looking at the transient population, transitional housing, particularly for the transients, and the need to construct new buildings for, for county staff. All, all issues which we don't have to address here are of low, were not significantly impacted by here in Villa Park, which made me very thankful that, you know, we've got a, a very quiet, good community. And of course, we want to participate in helping the county and other cities in addressing those problems so they don't migrate here. But thank goodness that we don't have to deal with that at this, in this location. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn to a regular meeting on February 27th, 2018 at 6:30 PM?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay. Okay, with that, I'll adjourn the meeting, thank you.